All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the North Augusta City Council Study Session for Monday, April the 28th, 2025, the order. It's great to see everybody. Thank you for being here. And I'm going to turn it over to our City Administrator, Mr. Jim Clifford.
Hey, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have, as per our practice, the Agenda Review for next week's City Council Meeting, Department Details by our Department Heads and under Mayor's Matters. We'll have three focus items tonight, the longest of which will be the Georgia Avenue Traffic Calming Presentation. This is a similar presentation that was received by the Planning Commission on behalf of Kimley Horn. And then we'll also have an upbridge update on Hurricane Helene and utility billing efforts to close this out. So with that, we go ahead and move into our Agenda Review. Mayor, we'll have two proclamations next week, one for Law Enforcement Week and one for Public Corps Week. And then we'll move right into old business under Planning Development Ordinance Number 2025-10 to amend the zoning map of North Augusta by rezoning about a half acre of land owned by Christopher Allen. Looks at the three parcels from General Commercial to R7. This had to do with converting a number of adjacent parcels to be able to put a smar residential unit there. This was heard through City Council, so this would be a second reading of that item. There weren't any major questions from the update last week, but I'll pause for any questions here for this particular item. Nothing heard. We'll move into new business. We'll have, under Planning Development Resolution Number 2025-11, accepting a D dedication for the water in San Torre Sore, along with a maintenance guarantee and cash deposit for Parker's Kitchen. And again, we have, that'll be the second Parker's Kitchen. We've got the first one, which is there at Route Ron there at 520. And this is for the Pepper's Kitchen. That's along Route 25 near Exit 5. And then we'll also be moving into election items. As y'all know, the general election is tomorrow on the 29th. And then we'll certify, we'll have the 2025 Municipal General Election Certification of Official Results from the Municipal Election Commission. You'll receive that as well under new business. We'll also be recognizing our Acon Councilmember David McGee. And then we'll have the oath of the newly elected mayor and council members administered by Judge Thomas Murphy. And I'll pause for any questions there. All right, nothing heard. I'm going to turn this over to Jamie Paul, who will pull the binding order for our Department Details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First up is Finance Director Linda Williamson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to update you on two different things. We have business license renewals that are going to be due Wednesday, April 30th. And also, our city property taxes are due Thursday, May 1st. And just a little tidbit of information, we set up a citizen help desk out front in the municipal center lobby. And that's for anyone to come in who's got any questions with their bill, or they need their tax number for their tax payments. If they're doing their business licenses, we can get that situated before they get up to the counter. So it'll make the line move a lot faster. And the wait should be a little bit less for everyone.
That's a great idea. And I spoke to the ladies today, and they said it was very helpful for a number of citizens coming in. So I'm not sure if Jim was going to share this in his piece, or he's going to let it... But that's a great idea. And having them up, walking around, talking to people, that's a great idea. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Human Resources Manager Kayla Ferguson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you look on the back of your Department Details, you will see our open employment opportunities. We also have our employee appreciation event at the Green Jackets Game on May the 6th. We'd love to see y'all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Engineering and Public Works, Brian Malik.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Standing in for Tom Zizer tonight, just a few things that you might see some work going on out in the city. The first thing is River View Park. Streets and Drains will be installing a French drain near Fairview. So there should be a little bit of activity there. Also, on the Greenway, Streets and Drains will be performing asphalt repairs around trees that were damaged during the hurricane. Their plan is to start at River View Park and move towards Martin Town Road, and then come back and go River View Park to Center Street. Third, SRP Park leak repairs are ongoing. The waterproofing is scheduled this week. After that is complete, there'll be concrete placement for about two weeks. And then finally, on the Detention Pond Tree Clearing Project, the contractor has finished Bergen West Ponds 1 and 2, and Carriage Hills Pond. And they are moving to Hidden Hills and Lynn Hurst this week.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next up is Plan Development Director Tommy Paradise.
Mayor and Council, we'll have the regular BZA meeting on May the 6th, the Tuesday. And we have the Lower Savannah River Basin Meeting on Thursday, May the 1st. It's coming Thursday. And also, the Art South Carolina Policy Summit is Thursday.
Next up is Public Services, Roy Kibler.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Filling in for Director James Sutton. The property maintenance staff is working on flower, spring flower install. We've got probably another week and a half on that. In Utilities, Water Service Line Replacement at 324 West Martin Town Road. We'll have the Westbound Lane of Martin Town Road, inner Westbound Lane will be closed, potentially starting Thursday, weather.
Do we know how long that'll be closed?
I do not know.
That'll be this Thursday?
Yes.
Thank you. And that is something we can get out on, let people know.
That's right, Mr. Ray. So Dave Fire will put out a posting that will have a map location as well, so people know where that closure is.
Thank you. I'll look. Safety Chief Johnson.
Good evening. This past weekend, on Saturday, we went to both Proger and Parks Pharmacy and assisted them with a DEA Drug Take Back Day. And at each location, the total added up to 149 pounds of medication that we were able to take back from them, so that it doesn't end up in the wrong hands. The public's... Yes, ma'am. So it was a good day at both locations for that. And this coming Saturday, we'll be having our Touch a Truck Event. This year, it's going to be at True North Church. So we encourage anyone to come out there. It's from 9:00 to 1:00. And if anybody, we do a sensory hour from 9:00 to 10:00. If you have a child that doesn't do well around sirens, loud noises, please bring them early for that. And then on Sunday, your North Augusta Public Safety Team will be playing in a softball tournament at SRP Park. So you can come down there, support us. Tickets are $10. And it goes to support the 5K Foundation, which is a nonprofit that helps out first responders in the local community. And then we'll be participating, I know SRS Fire Department, Aiken Public Safety, Richmond County Sheriff's Office, Aiken County Sheriff's Office are participating in that as well. There we go. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Next up is Parks and Recreation Director Rick Meyer.
Good evening. Let me add on the Greenway Trail Asphalt Repair Work. That won't begin till Wednesday this week. And if there needs to be any sections that are closed off for a short period of time, we will obviously post that on social media. Creighton Park Playground Installation, River View Park Tennis Courts Reservicing, and Activities Center Elevator Monitorization Projects are all in progress and doing very well. Hopefully soon, we'll be able to give everybody a date that we'll be looking to be finished.
For each of those?
Yes. And the North Augusta Healthy Fair, scheduled for May 10th, has been moved to the River View Park Activities Center, originally scheduled for First Baptist, but they still haven't replaced their roof from the hurricane. And one note to add, the River View Park Splash Pan went out of service today due to a 3-inch main irrigation line break. Utilities and property maintenance crews are working on the repair. The goal was to have it back in service for the weekend, and we have that posted on our social media site.
And news that a nice, I thought, interview article on Jake and the Greenway team.
Yes. Thank you. That was good.
Came out real nice, I thought.
Very good.
Okay, to close out Department Details, it's Tourism Manager Carl Walther.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Have a few other events I want to highlight that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. This Saturday, May 3rd, is our third Explore North Augusta Concert. Sharon Jones Amphitheater, 7 o'clock. Chris and Minnigall will take the stage. Thursday, May 8th, North Augusta Chamber of Commerce will be hosting their Good Morning North Augusta Breakfast at 7:30 here at Palmetto Terrace. Robert Kelly with Augusta Staffing will be talking about business recruitment. Thursday, May 8th, is the start of the North Augusta Cultural Arts Council Music in the Park Series with Swing Shift. And that's going to start at 7 o'clock at the North Augusta Community Center. And on Saturday, May 17th, our last Spring Concert Series for Explore North Augusta will be at the Sharon Jones Amphitheater, 7 o'clock with Going South.
Is that concert inside the community center?
It is. It is. Yes, ma'am.
I know that. Did we ever hear anything about replacing that shelter?
We're... Yeah, we're working on that, coming up with some ideas. We're kind of in the idea phase of it. But for right now, we're going to move that concert series inside. And there's a couple of weeks where we're going to find some alternate.
And I presume there'll be chairs. People don't have to bring chairs.
Absolutely. No, no, no. We're going to have that all set up and ready to go for them. Yes, ma'am.
And one more quickly. We also have these concerts in the summer, like did last year.
Yeah, we're going to make an announcement pretty soon. We're coming up with a couple things. As you know, from going to those concerts last, you know, summer, in the dead of summer, it's kind of hot. So we're going to spread a couple of things out and hopefully have a couple of quick events in the summer as well. We're going to make some announcements here shortly. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Clifford.
So we'll move over here into the focus items, and I'll turn over to Tommy Paradise, our Planning Director, to kind of do an introduction here for Kimley Horn, and maybe set the table for how the actions with the Planning Commission. So with that, Tommy Paradise.
Mayor and Council, I'm back again. The Planning Commission heard the presentation from Joe, Mr. Robertson, at their April 16th meeting. And they had several, they approved it unanimously to adopt it. But they did have some recommendations that they wanted to include in that. I'd like to share those with you just a minute. They went block by block. Basically, they recommended including buffers for parallel parking spaces, and also to reduce the median width to allow additional width of existing sidewalks. I've asked Mr. Robertson to look at those recommendations and provide y'all's, you know, ask him to drill deeper into it and provide y'all some information on what that impact would be on the project going forward. They also had two other recommendations that they wanted Council to make, wanted to make the Council in conjunction with the plan. And one of those was to include gateway signage as part of the traffic calming. And the other was, consider a plan for additional parking options and traffic calming for streets that may see increased traffic because of improvements on Georgia Avenue. So that is the information sent to you from the Planning Commission. And, you know, we've been working on this project for a while. We're coming down to the end. And I'm going to let Mr. Robertson have at it, unless y'all have any questions for me.
I do. Couple of questions. So did they go in much detail as far as, I read the information, I hadn't gone back and watched it yet. So on the gateway signage, is that just an idea? And they're going to want us to, with Joe, to figure out what that looks like? And two, on the parking options, was there any specific examples or anything, a particular area, or was just an idea, and then it's up to us to, they want us to figure it out?
Let me back up just a second. And they unanimously recommended the roundabout instead of the other.
Sure.
As far as the gateway, they just said include gateway signage. You're seeing Joe's presentation, and he does talk about gateway signage. There wasn't anything about design or anything. They talked about maybe using some parking behind some of the businesses and that type of thing, seeing where we could facilitate more parking at downtown. But there wasn't a dead, you know, this plan, you know, directions or suggestions to do a particular project.
What I was getting at is, so folks understand, the downtown master plan, when that was done, there was a, I think, three pockets of potential spaces and ideas that we could look at, such as a private-public partnership. We had actually had a conversation with some folks back on East Avenue. That didn't exactly work out at this point. But what I'm saying is, there are some pockets that I think is worth a conversation, I think we can look at. So I just wanted to try to make sure that's what they were talking about.
Yeah, so they didn't, no directions, just, we need to look at this.
We're good. Thank you, Tommy.
Anything else? I'll let Joe have it.
Thank you, Tommy. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As Tommy mentioned, I'm Joe Robertson with Kimley Horn. I've been before y'all several times now at this point discussing this project. So a lot of information in the presentation y'all have seen before. I'll try to not spend too much time on that and try to get to the new stuff that's at the end. But if there are any questions as I'm going through, feel free to stop me and ask along the way. So as y'all are familiar, the genesis of this project came from the city's most recent comprehensive plan to develop a long-term vision and strategy for Georgia Avenue as a pedestrian-oriented Main Street. As y'all know, downtown North Augusta is not only a gateway into the city itself, but also into the state of South Carolina. So finding ways to, you know, improve it from a pedestrian safety and traffic calming perspective is a priority for the city. So the goals for this project specifically are to collect data, engage with the public and stakeholders and decision-makers, be able to identify any issues or concerns along Georgia Avenue, and then come up with specific improvements and projects that could be used to improve pedestrian safety and traffic calming in downtown. And once we have that list of projects, to rank them based on cost and feasibility of implementation. And then finally, identification of alternate funding sources, which is something that I know y'all have already been working hard on to this point. So...
Y'all make sure you talk into the microphone.
We have thousands of people who watch us every day.
Sure. Sure. All right. So existing traffic control, again, as y'all are aware, in downtown, there's three traffic signals. The rest of the intersections are stop signs. Then there's also the crosswalks near the Pink Dipper at the intersection of Pine Grove. We collected speed data as part of this study. So basically, what this boils down to, the posted speed limit in downtown is 30 miles per hour along Georgia Avenue. So anywhere on this map that you see 85th percentile speed greater than 35, that indicates that there's a potential speeding issue. So on the northern end of downtown and the southern end of downtown, 85% of traffic is driving at those speeds or higher, indicating that there's some higher speeds coming into and out of the area. We also collected traffic count data back in August of 2022 when we started this project. So this is the daily amount of vehicles that pass along each portion of Georgia Avenue. On the southern end, towards the river, you've got about 20... On the southern end, towards the river, you've got about 25,000 vehicles per day. It starts to decrease as you get into the heart of downtown, and then starts to increase again as you get up towards the Jackson Avenue, Carolina Avenue segment. Looking forward into the future, we estimated about a 2% annual growth for the downtown portion of North Augusta. So for, you know, transportation engineering, we try to look 20-plus years into the future, so that we make sure whatever we're evaluating and designing is built to last for a long time. So looking at year 2047 in this case, it looks like traffic could potentially be upwards of 40,000 on the southern end, about 30,000 on the northern end, if this area continues to grow as it has been for the next.
Let me add something real quick. Back to your daily traffic, all right, because you're only going a block from, let's say, Spring Grove to Pine Grove. Now, what, these numbers, explain that to me. I mean, it looks like that'd be the same traffic coming down the hill.
I think they're turning off and going towards Hammond's Ferry area and the park at the bottom half. And on the bottom half is why it's higher down there.
That's correct. Yes. When we collect the data, it's like a snapshot at one point along each segment. And so the reason the volume is changing is folks are turning to and from the side streets and distributing.
So I mean, like, let's say that, is this like they're coming down Georgia Avenue?
Yeah, so this is the traffic, these numbers is the traffic on Georgia Avenue. But when it changes from one point to the other.
When it changes the numbers, that means they've turned off.
Correct. Some folks have turned off and other folks have turned on.
Turn off the streets.
It's for coming and going.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, those are, those are two-way volumes.
So you're not picking up the same cars over and over and over?
Now, some of them might, you know, if they're going from the river all the way up to Martin Town, they'll show up in each one of those stations.
As much as you drive, David.
You buy on there four, five times.
Heck, I went around Pete Depp four times.
Well, that's me. I'm up there enjoying.
Folks may be popping up multiple times throughout the day. So we tried to capture it all. Next slide. We also collected crash data from South Carolina Department of Public Safety. You can see all the dots on the map here. Each of these indicate an individual crash that was reported. The yellow crash dots are angle crashes, so like a T-bone crash. The reds are rear-end crashes. So as you can imagine, on four-lane undivided section like Georgia Avenue is, particularly with on-street parking, there's a lot of rear-end crashes and angle crashes reported, that we're looking to try to reduce those, you know, through these recommendations. This is just a heat map showing the crashes. So the hottest crash spot along the corridor is Georgia Avenue at Buena Vista. And then you can see that's kind of red and yellow up and down. And then another high point up at the Martin Town Road intersection. Peak hour traffic operations, we evaluated it with turning movement counts at each of these intersections. So level of service, you can think of it like school grades, with A being the best, F would be the worst within downtown with our existing traffic data. Overall, it's not, not too bad. Everything operates pretty well during those peak hours. There is a level of service D at Pine Grove in the PM. That's likely attributed to folks stopping at the stop sign, having to wait for a sufficient gap to be able to turn onto Georgia Avenue. We held several workshops with the public. The first one was in October of 2022. We had a meeting with property and business owners along Georgia Avenue. Just a quick summary of the concerns we learned from that meeting. A lot of concerns in regards to the parking, both the difficulty of folks backing out of the parking spots on the street, also, you know, delivery trucks and a potential reduction of parking that could come out of this project. Overall, there was a desire for improved pedestrian safety, some streetscape and beautification improvements, and then addressing some of the perceived speeding issues. We had a similar meeting with the public the following month, in November of '22. A lot of the same feedback we got from the public, traffic and congestion, perceived speeding issues, walkability and pedestrian enhancements, and opportunity to shift traffic to West Avenue, which Tommy mentioned is something that the Planning Commission also had asked about, and then streetscape and beautification improvements as well. One of the early options that we evaluated was the feasibility of doing a road diet, so taking the four-lane divided Georgia Avenue, making it one lane each direction with a center turn lane. You can see a lot of, a lot of words on this slide. I won't read all that. But basically, it boils down to 25,000 vehicles per day is kind of the magic number for a road diet from federal government guidance, since we are already at or above that on the lower end of our corridor. We pretty quickly eliminated this as a traffic calming strategy that we can carry forward. This is the gateway signage, again, that the Planning Commission had asked about. This is just a screen capture from the city's wayfinding plan that was prepared several years ago. These are just examples that we've included, certainly not what it would ultimately look like. But as a traffic calming strategy, gateway signage research shows that it can help to reduce traffic speeds by two to three miles per hour. So certainly a notable benefit there. Another strategy that we looked at and considered is landscape medians. This is a photo of downtown Lexington, just up the road where I live. The medians certainly help kind of narrow, the driver's vision as they're going down the road and help to slow speeds as drivers are going up and down the street. High-visibility crosswalks is another one. So you can see here, this is called a ladder style. It gathers a lot more attention than just the two stripes on either side. This is the RRFB. I know we've talked about this one in detail at some previous meetings. This is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. It's a much more enhanced-type crosswalk than what's out there on Georgia Avenue today.
You know, we have one now on West Avenue, which would be great.
Sir, yeah. It sounds like everybody's pretty receptive to that one so far.
We see people using it.
Yeah, that's great. I think one of these on Georgia Avenue, or a couple of them on Georgia Avenue would be great. Now getting into the recommendations themselves, as mentioned earlier, we identified all these and then kind of ranked them in terms of, you know, puzzle pieces, which one should probably go in place first, and then the rest of them can fall into place after that. So the first one is the downtown stretch from Pine Grove to Spring Grove. As you know, this is currently four-lane undivided. There's several driveways through here, on-street angled parking. So the recommendations here are to take the angled parking and convert it to parallel, which then gains you some extra width that you can use to put the raised median down the center of the roadway to help divide the traffic, you know, undivided traffic. It's a little bit hairy driving when you're, you know, there's somebody coming the other direction, they're very close. Also, with the angled parking converted to parallel, it, it causes a little bit more friction for folks as they're trying to park. You know, they have to stop in the lane, put their turn signal on, and back into the space. But it's much easier and safer for them to leave the parking space than trying to back out into oncoming traffic from an angled spot like they do today.
Most, I mean, you get more parking spaces with parallel or angled?
So angled allows for more parking spaces on-street, but because it's at an angle, it sticks out.
Yeah, it does, because if people don't pull up to that curb, then that tail's sticking out.
Correct. And just the geometry of it, too. You know, if you're parallel to the road, it's only about eight feet, whereas the angled spaces out there in Georgia Avenue is.
And if you're parking by a big truck or something, you almost have to back out into the road before you realize.
Right.
You know what I do? When I get angled, I get my car started, I open the door, I go to the back of the car and wait until the light turns. Once the light turns, I run as fast as I can and get the car. So what's the? Go back to the other one. You're jumping too fast on me. So you may not be able to answer this yet. Explain to me about the buffers, the parallel parking, what, I don't, explain to me what that looks like and what would that do? Does that, how we think we're going to add buffers, that's going to even change this even, maybe lower it another one or two spaces, or what's that mean?
That's correct. And I've got to, I'll go ahead and talk about it now. I've got a slide in here later.
Okay, that's mine. I just didn't know. I didn't want you to miss it.
Yeah, I can cover it a little bit.
Okay, we'll do it later.
I have a quick question, too. On the landscape part, the green, is that a recommended length, or can it be longer in that, in that situation?
That's something that can be worked out in design. But right now, that's one area that, you know, we felt fairly comfortable that that could be low landscaped area. The rest of it is where sight distance kind of becomes an issue. So if you're coming off of Pine Grove, and you can see on the top corner there at Pine Grove in Georgia, you've got a lot of what used to be, or is currently on-street parking hashed out. That's to keep that corner clear. So if you're coming down Pine Grove, making a left on Georgia, you have to be able to see across that median.
Okay, that makes sense. I would just prefer as much landscaping as possible over concrete.
Joe, we had talked about this, and maybe it's here, looking at it. But the other thing we talked about with the crosswalk was, we weren't, we're going to have the, you are, what? Okay. We're talking about, we're talking about the kind flashing that's on the ground that's going to show even more. So that's listed here, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I've got a zoom in in one of the next slides that covers that, too.
Joe, just a real quick question, too. One of the big concerns when anybody mentions parallel parking is, I mean, there's a certain amount of discomfort with people, parallel parking. Is there data that shows, obviously, the least friction for, well, I say obviously, I think, the least friction for slanted parking is parking pulling out is where the danger happens. With parallel, it's the opposite. What the relative safety numbers, you know, what is relative one to the other? What is, what does the data show as far as safety?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. And I don't have the specifics of what the data will show. I know that there's pros and cons for angled versus parallel, as you mentioned. With parallel, getting into the spot is much easier, but then getting out, there's challenges, particularly if there are folks driving 40 miles an hour in a 30 mile per hour zone. Also, sight distance becomes more of an issue for drivers, you know, as they're coming up the street. If someone's about to back out of an angled parking spot and there's two or three vehicles in front of them, you won't see that car backing out until they're out in the roadway. Whereas with parallel, you know, ideally, they've already got their turn signal on, it's easier for the driver to see other folks that are coming. They can pull out. It's much, much easier to be able to see them.
Yeah, it makes sense. I know, as we continue, I mean, that's going to be one of the friction points that I've heard. So, you know, whatever we can kind of have to understand what that's going to look like would be helpful in making a decision.
You know, but I also think that the objective is, I mean, if that helps slow people down to have to wait, I don't have a problem with it.
Either would slow you down one way or another.
Well, either you can't see.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, I understand, but both are going to have, I would imagine, some slowing effect, because you, you're worried about somebody backing in. But yeah, I'd just like to see what the data says. I mean, we very rarely find that surprise.
Yeah, and I'll note, too.
No, this is Chief Johnson. He might have to have a class to help us all learn to parallel park again.
Well, we have that everywhere. All the other parking spaces we have are parallel.
I mean, it works in most other cities around. I'm not, I'm not necessarily talking bad about it. I mean, I, I don't mind, I don't love parallel parking. I'm not saying I'm great at it, but I can do it. I'd just like to understand what that looks like.
Sure. And I think it's a compounding effect for these particular recommendations, too, because by converting the angle to parallel, you've now gained width. By narrowing the travel lanes, you've gained additional width. By doing both of those things together, now you've got the 12 feet available for the median in the center. So they're all kind of working hand in hand with each other overall to reduce travel speeds. Any further questions on this one before we move on? So moving along, this is the Buena Vista to Pine Grove segment. You can see here, a little bit more detail. And again, I'll zoom in on a future slide for the RRFB there at the Pine Grove Avenue intersection. By putting that in place, again, it further enhances the safety for pedestrians crossing the street on either side. We've also got the high-visibility crosswalks across the side streets. By gaining that width again from narrowing the lanes, putting in the RRFB with pedestrian refuge, now also freed up some additional width for the 12-foot two-way left turn lane that you see there in front of the Sheila's Bakery, Your Pie development there. This is a zoom in of the RRFB there at Pine Grove. You can see we've laid in the signs to show what that would look like. We've got them on both sides of the road. There's also push buttons in the center island. So if there's, you know, folks that are, need to walk a little bit slower, whether they're elderly or pushing a stroller, or for whatever reason, they can make it to the median and stop and push the button, then turn the light again to be able to go. Now, any of these buttons that you would push, the entire intersection will light up, flash in both directions. It can. Causes more race. And as the mayor mentioned, there's also the in-road warning lights that we recommend. So it's kind of hard to see with the little yellow circles next to the crosswalks in the pavement. Those will also flash at drivers as well when the button is pushed. So moving along, this is the Spring Grove to Jackson Avenue intersection. You can see we're still showing the initial left turn lane at Jackson that we had in an earlier iteration of the study. But again, converting the angled parking to parallel gains some width. Narrowing the travel lanes to 11 feet gains some width. With that extra width that we've gained, there's now an opportunity for a 12-foot center turn lane to help folks turning to and from driveways along this segment. And then moving down towards this end of the segment, right outside of the building here, from Center Street to Buena Vista. Not a whole lot of change here. We recommend narrowing up the lanes. And then also, throughout the course of this, developing this project, there was identified a desire to put in another RRFB crossing there next to Clifton Avenue, connecting the two arcs on either side of Georgia Avenue, and also connecting over to, yeah, the new Greenway extension, since there's a lot more folks probably going to be crossing in this area.
You were listening, that's good.
Is there any sidewalk widening options through this section? I don't know if y'all been on that. It's very narrow in that area. I don't know if that would work, but.
There wasn't anything that we identified yet at this, at this point in the study. Certainly something that could be evaluated in design, I would think. There's a desire for that.
It's the side, the right-hand side going up this direction. Okay, thank you.
So this was the original.
Hold on one minute. What about, I've been concerned over this for several years. The Waffle House, turning into the Waffle House is really not a turn lane. You have to stay in that left lane, and then, of course, you're blocking traffic behind you, turning in there. Does this show a, Waffle House, because I hope they'll be here forever. We all love Waffle House.
Right, right.
Well, there'll be a turn in for the, the only thing I say on any of this, as long as these businesses have a way in and out, and, and like I said, and I know we're not discussing that now, but behind the businesses, because that's some of their parking places. So I just want to be sure everybody on that Georgia Avenue is happy, and their business is taken care of.
Well, Pat, you won't be able to turn left in there because of the median. You have to go around back.
What, to the Waffle House?
Yeah, if you're coming down Georgia Avenue, you won't be able to turn.
Into the Waffle House. Well, see, I don't like that.
Now, which median, I don't know if that median goes.
You don't have that picture of that next one, do you?
That's right. If, if we can go back a slide to.
So where would I have, David?
No, there's not a median.
There's no median there. So there was, we didn't have any modification.
Well, the only full median is the 500 block where.
What?
Where, where the Grove is.
The what?
The Grove, that block.
Oh, yeah, yeah. 500 is from Spring Grove to Pine Grove. I mean, I'm sorry, Pine Grove to, yeah, Pine Grove to Spring Grove. It's 500 blocks on Georgia Avenue. Waffle House is a 300 block.
Correct. Yeah. And this is the Waffle House right here. You can see it on the bottom of the page there, the little Waffle House.
Only screen.
Right there.
Correct. Yes. So we didn't have any modifications here. Because there's a exclusive left turn lane turning onto Buena Vista. There's not really any opportunity to modify that at all.
So where are you going to turn into Waffle?
Right there.
Yeah, but you're still in that, you're not in a.
Yep. I was wrong, Pat. I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong side.
Yeah, you're not in a turn lane.
No, you're not.
I'm sorry. I, I.
Yeah, that's right. That's what I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want people to get in Waffle House.
Right. Yeah. And I don't disagree with you. With the exclusive left turn lane at Buena Vista for the signal, there wasn't any opportunity to shorten that.
Without a doubt.
Provide a two-way left turn lane for the Waffle House, so we left it as is.
It's just like DOT did over there by, on Buena Vista with Darryl Blockers. That was a mess. It still is a mess.
But Pat, remember.
I'm sorry.
We aren't, we aren't designing this for any one business, because that business may not exist. So what we're doing is, we're trying to do it for the walkability and slowing traffic down.
Yeah, I know we are, but I don't want us to knock out our business either.
Right.
You know, I don't, I mean, I just want to be sure, that is just.
I mean, I don't see any, I don't see any blockage, is what I'm saying. There's no blockage, except, there's no blockage.
But you just happen to sit in the road. But you just happen to sit in the road itself.
Well, they were that bad.
I believe unless it's changed, I think the Waffle House also has connectivity over to Buena Vista as well.
It does.
Has one, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but a lot of people don't want to do that, go off back in that alley.
Well, that's a problem.
I just gotta take the Waffle House now. What, I'm going there tonight now? No, I'm not. What now? Oh, yeah, they gonna get there. They gonna get there.
What we've learned is people will change their path to get where they want to go. That's been proven.
Hopefully, they'll walk there so they can burn some calories and then.
Oh, no, honey, no, you're not. We did walk down.
Get them there safer, too. Let's keep going, Joe.
All right, keep going, but I I just want that on record. I'm concerned about that.
Sure.
And that all these small businesses, that people can get in and out easily. Okay, go ahead.
Yep. And so again, this is the the initial option that we came up with for the kind of five-legged intersection of Georgia, Carolina, and Jackson and the church access. As y'all recall, this was okay for what it was, but y'all wanted us to look into some additional options. And we'll just talk about the benefits of this real quick. Carolina Avenue is currently coming down the hill. It's a very skewed intersection with Georgia. A lot of folks kind of do the quick look over the shoulder, roll right on through the stop sign, continue on. So it's not really a great configuration that's there. There's also a lot of pavement. So if folks are coming down Georgia Avenue, you know, folks may potentially start veering off of the edge of the road and then coming back in before they hit the Jackson Avenue intersection. There really is some opportunity for cleanup there, which is what we did here, keeping everything within the existing curb lines, realigning Carolina to get a better angle and so forth. And then also an exclusive left turn lane from Georgia to Carolina, since that's a heavily turned movement in the PMP.
I'm sorry, I can't hear that. Repeat that.
Yeah, so the the northbound left turn lane from Georgia to Carolina, as I'm sure you're aware, is very high in the PMP because folks are coming back, going up there. So the biggest benefit of this is putting in an exclusive northbound left turn lane to get them out of the travel lane and then also cleaning up the geometry of Carolina as it ties into Georgia.
But the two issues that we that we didn't care for was you still had the Jackson issue. But you still, this was great for Carolina, but it still doesn't help with the traffic coming down Georgia Avenue, turning left, so.
Correct, yeah. So all that being said, I know y'all asked us to to take another look into things, which is the next slide here. So we looked at several options. Before I get into the weeds on this one, we did look at a traffic signal warrant analysis for Georgia and Carolina. While the volumes are pretty high during the peak hours, there's not a ton of activity throughout the rest of the day. So that being said, the traffic signal warrant study didn't show a need for a traffic signal throughout the course of the day. So the next thing that we looked at was this roundabout. With Georgia Avenue being a four-lane road and with as much volume as it has, we couldn't look at putting a single lane roundabout here. So we looked at this dual-lane option. The good news is with the side streets from Jackson Avenue and the church on the other side, Methodist Church, there's not a lot of side street activity. So by doing that, we were able to shrink the roundabout slightly. You can see on kind of the, it's rotated here, but the north and south portions of the roundabout, there's a single lane there. But then Georgia Avenue, as it comes up and down, is still two lanes each direction.
Oh, I love the roundabout. I love that. I do. I think that would solve a lot of problems. That right there, Jackson and Georgia and Carolina is a nightmare.
Yes.
There's a lot going on in, you know, being two lanes.
And I sat there the other day on Jackson. I thought, well, I got right away and doggone here come flying on there. I said, well, let me sit on the bottom.
So Mr. Mayor, if I could, for the for council as well, just as a reminder about funding strategies, you know, most of the discussion we've had to date here along the length of Georgia Avenue, we have the likely ability to fund out a capital project sales tax for. This intersection would outstrip that ability, and so this would leak into CBSD5 and potentially, you know, arts funding. We'd have to work through some of the strategy pieces of how we would fund this, but just to see y'all understood, if if the council decided to move forward, there would be basically a two-phase project, and the first major phase being the length of Georgia Avenue with whatever intersection improvements that you all would want to do as a second phase, just based on our funding levels at this time.
That does make sense. It's pretty expensive.
Yeah, so the the roundabout has a a large footprint. As you can see, the the blue lines that are on the the graphic here, maybe a little hard to see. That's the existing edge of curb for the roadway. The yellow lines is the right-of-way. So you can see with this footprint, it does overstep the existing right-of-way. However, three of the four-ish corners are city properties currently. And then there's a little bit of impact on the Baptist Church corner that you can see there. But overall, it was able to to fit in pretty nicely. Roundabouts can potentially be tricky or, you know, a little bit overwhelming for pedestrians. However, you can see here, we've got crosswalks marked on the northern end of the intersection. We would anticipate the crosswalks on Georgia Avenue and Carolina Avenue both to also be RRFBs with the button that you can push and the flashing lights. While it looks like it, it is a lot of legs to cross. The the benefit there is you're only crossing one direction of traffic at a time. So for instance, if you're crossing Georgia, you're looking left to see who's coming out of the roundabout, then you stop in the median, and you're looking right to see who's coming down the hill into the roundabout. So it it seems like a long way, but it's broken up into smaller trips, a safe option overall. Get through there now. Right, and it would be very tricky to cross there today in its current configuration, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We don't have access.
Correct, yeah. So any any questions on this slide? All right, so kind of circling back to your question from earlier about the buffered parallel spaces, since this was something that the planning commission mentioned during that presentation. The photo above here is an example from downtown Columbia of what buffered spaces could look like. So you could have a pair of spaces together back to back and then a four-foot buffer on either end to give you some additional room for folks that are uncomfortable parallel parking or maybe need a little bit more space. You can see here the the vehicle in the back is overhanging a little bit and taking advantage of that buffer. In our concept, we have a 22-foot space shown, so the graphics that we've been looking at are 22 feet long. With a four-foot buffer in place using this type of strategy, it would result in a reduction in parking spaces. But the way we've got it laid out, we kind of played around with it a little bit, and we estimate you probably would only lose three spaces, maybe.
How many?
About three to four spaces.
I I know I should know these numbers, so we're going to lose from the angle to the parallel just two, right?
Uh, it's a bit more than that.
I mean, not on not on the buffer, just before we get there on on that section, the 500 block.
Yeah, so if we can go to the next slide.
You got nothing.
So this is, okay, yeah, this is the table showing the before and after parking counts. So the existing is kind of the the middle of the table there. There's currently 58 on-street angled parking spaces. That's both blocks of Georgia Avenue, Pine Grove to Spring Grove and Spring Grove to Jackson. With the conversion to parallel, that number would drop from 58 down to 39. So about a third or a 33% reduction in on-street parking. With the buffers in place, probably an additional three spaces would be reduced, bringing that number down to 36.
To me, that's a lot of loss.
It's it's a lot of loss in on-street parking.
Right, on-street.
You have to weigh the priorities of would you rather have the width for the angle parking and have, you know, undivided roadway or take advantage of that width with parallel and then have the median.
Well, that would require that, I don't know, Jim or whoever needs to answer this one. If we take away those that many parking places, then because we want people to come downtown and walk. Downtown is not near a, like your house, Jennifer's there, but the majority of us are out. And so would that sort of required in these businesses, they're going to have to have parking lots and things that people can park behind their businesses?
I'd say a number of businesses have their own parking right now and. Understand, but those are still viable parking options for those for those businesses. And we can certainly look at your future improvements on the on the backside parking lots. But from a from a real estate perspective, from a square footage and number of parking spaces perspective, there is enough parking down there to absorb the last of a total of what's called 22 spaces. If you go into the, you know, existing to a four-foot buffer manner, when you look at what the parking lots are. And then you also have overflow parking areas, which I know is a bit of a rock, but we still have the Medac parking deck and also City Hall's parking lot, which is open to the public, you know, at all times. And even with the Medac deck, there's 100 spaces that are 25 hours a day dedicated towards public parking. So that number increases in the evenings and on the weekends, but even during a weekday, you still have 100 total parking spaces available for the general public.
One of the areas that we have not had early conversations years ago, but the most unutilized parking spaces we have are churches. And they're literally right next to everything we're talking about. So now we have the ability to have a conversation because of the roundabout. We're going to need to do it anyway. So again, that's available. And I I still go back, when people talk about parking, I'll debate anybody about this, about do we have enough downtown parking? All I know is Christmas parade, the same thing with the Spring Fest, same in J O J. People will park to go where they want to go. We have made Georgia Avenue a thoroughfare to get from point A to B, and that is not the objective. We want to do just what you said. We care about those downtown businesses. We want people to go slow so they'll stop and go into those businesses. We want you to be able, us, the people, to take their children across Georgia Avenue. We want a downtown that's walkable. We want people to go slow, and we want to promote that. So, you know, you go to any other community, people will park on West Avenue and walk one block to their store. But we have people programmed, and I can't find my business, you know, and that's unfortunate, but that's that's not what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, I think there's one more slide, maybe. Oh, here's another one. So with the the question about the median widths versus the sidewalks, we had our roadway engineers dig into this a little bit. If you were to shrink the median in the Grove block, as you called it, from Spring Grove to Pine Grove, you can shrink that up and then you would have to expand the sidewalks if that's what's desired. To be able to do that, you would have to saw cut the sidewalk to put in a new joint. There would also be drainage adjustments, a whole slew of things that would come into play if that was the path moving forward. We estimate that that would probably be about an additional 750,000 to a million dollars to make that change. And then above and beyond that, if you were to shrink the raised median on that block to be consistent along the rest of Georgia Avenue up and down, you'd probably have to shrink the other medians as well. DOT is not going to like you to have a 12-foot turn lane and then it shrinks down to, you know, an eight-foot median and then comes back out again.
And we've talked to DOT, so they're, and right now, in general, they are in agreement. They are fine with this proposal, right?
Correct. We haven't talked with them about this specific topic, but we've talked to them about the other pieces. Yes, sir. They're in general agreement with it.
Thing about it is, it's more of a project for JD, but I walked every, I've measured. The funny thing about our sidewalks, because Charles Martin brought this up, we actually have a lot of sections in our downtown that we have very wide sidewalks. We don't think about it. The problem is, it's not consistent. So I remember one Saturday, I walked and measured, I have in my notes, measured all our sidewalks. And there's a lot of 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 sections, like four or five businesses that have really wide sidewalks. And then the next two businesses are more narrow. So it's not like we don't have any wide sidewalks. It's just, for whatever reason, it's not consistent.
I'm very familiar with the width of those sidewalks.
Yeah, you did some of them.
I put them all in back in 2000, but they were that way because of the angle parking.
Yeah.
But overall, I mean, most of them, probably 75% are almost 10 feet wide. I don't know what else we're trying to go, but. Wow, sidewalk.
Walkers in a.
I feel like that, other than that one section that I was talking about from like, I guess like the Highlander coming up on that right-hand side, that's real narrow. That's the only narrow section that I know of.
You're not going to fix that because that slope drops right off.
Oh, yeah.
But you're right, Pat. Your point, that's why that down to Greenway connect on the backside is going to be sold to give people that ability.
So next steps, as Tommy mentioned, we're in the kind of the final phases of this, continued coordination with staff and, you know, city leadership with you all here tonight. Also, you know, final coordination with SCDOT. They are in agreement with everything from a conceptual standpoint for Phase One. The roundabout, we've discussed with them. Yeah, they're digging into it a little bit more from a traffic engineering perspective to make sure they're good with it, so. They weren't totally against it up front. I wouldn't say that they were against it at all, but, you know, they have a healthy amount of skepticism to show that it works.
In general, are they, they're not big favor, they're not big fans of those generally, DOT, or does it just depend on the situation?
I'd say it depends on the situation. I'd say roundabouts as a whole, you know, SCDOT is very supportive of. I think there's been a lot of proven safety benefits from roundabouts, but again, it's a case-by-case basis.
We'd love to show them that area. Let them pull up in there.
So did you say they were of roundabouts, SCDOT, or?
Yeah, so SCDOT as a whole is supportive of roundabouts because they're a great safety countermeasure. But it is a case-by-case. It's not a a one-size-fits-all, because otherwise we would just put roundabouts everywhere and it'd be great. And they don't work everywhere, but I think this is a good candidate for one, for sure.
Yeah.
Want me to say a thing about the session?
Thank you, Mr. That was my cue. What I was going to say for the, as Joe talked about, for really the the next steps, the next step from a city council perspective is we'll schedule a public input session on Monday, the 12th of May. So that will be at before the start of the study session. It's not a public hearing. It's a public input session, and then we'll have scheduled thereafter a resolution to accept the traffic recommendations as provided by the planning commission and by Kimberly Horn. And then a follow-on resolution, because we've put out forbid the RFQ request for qualifications for a firm to actually do the engineering work involved with what's been presented here.
This is the first step.
Yes.
So you hear that? We are going to have public input, so we'll be able to get this. Jamie posted all this online, so people will be able to see this, so we'll do that.
All right.
This is good, Joe. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for your time tonight and appreciate it.
Nelson, since we're talking about traffic, I don't think I've announced it officially, but I think everybody's already seen it, that the traffic light at Nobcon and Martin Town is now operational, so it's no longer flashing. So it is now a full-on regular traffic light there at Nobcon and Martin Town.
All right. Say some lies.
Yes. Yes.
Think we're doing hurricane first?
Fun mom out there. I know, I kept promising it. Have that light before her child graduates and they graduate this year, so. We managed to do it.
Been a long time coming.
All right, we'll just move right into the the hurricane update. So the the biggest thing that's occurred this week is if you're down at the Parks and Rec area in the soccer complex, you can see that that debris pile has been reduced significantly. I say we're over 90% complete at this point in time. The goal is to have that fully removed by Friday, and then after that, our city crews will begin work to restoring that to basic operations and also potentially lay some gravel, so that'll be restored to parking areas for the soccer complex for the parents. So that was one of our key action items this last week. And then we've also had some limited backhaul operations that are ongoing. We've also had, you know, Jameson and his crew have been out there doing a waste water line easement clearing. And then as Brian Malik had previously briefed, contractors are still working through the stormwater detention pond clearing operations. Next slide. So things that are going to be happening here in the future, that we've talked about a number of these already. What you'll start seeing here in the next two weeks is the grinding operations at both the Country Club and the Buena Vista sites. And then as those are ground, then the STR contractors will remove those. ground, then the STR contractors will remove those going forward. Then we also have fencing repair, Tom Cesar, when he gets back from his conference, we'll put that out for bid, and we'll go through that option. And then, Councilman Carl, from your earlier question about Maude and Phil Park, we're going to be demolishing that structure on or about the 10th of May. There'll still be some, you know, council deliberation about what's going to happen in lieu of those sites, but regardless of what the decision, we do have to get that site demolished, just from a safety perspective, so people aren't, you know, playing in and around a structure that has the possibility of collapse. Next slide. I know everybody loves this slide, and it's almost done with. Next slide. Back one, thank you. And then, as we talked about, the four-yard waste service will be resuming on the week of the 2nd of June. So, in the meantime, bags are encouraged but not required, but right now, if you bag up your waste, up to four bags per week, the yard crews will grab that, but then we're going to start moving crews back onto the four-yard waste timeline, starting on the 2nd of June.
And Jim, a lady texted me yesterday on Jackson Avenue, her address is 317 Jackson, but she said across the street, which is a totally vacant lot, is a lot, and I've got a picture on the street, I went by tonight to look at it.
He knows about it.
Huh?
He knows about it.
Okay, well, I thought I wrote to you too, but usually you respond, but I didn't. But it's nobody's land, but what happens with those type pickups? I mean, it's somebody's land, but no house is there.
And all the wires.
Yeah, the wires and all of that.
Well, that's coordination, we have both AT&amp;T and Comcast to get those wires removed.
But there's a lot of debris, and I think it's debris from...
The debris up till we get the wires.
So, who do we need to call then, because she's...
We have. That's what I'm saying, we've already been touched with AT&amp;T.
Oh, you have, okay. All right, well, she just texted back today and says...
It's going to still be a while to get all the wires removed.
My answer to her is, we have to get AT&amp;T.
We call for the head guy at AT&amp;T for this area.
Yeah, all right, so they've got to clean that up in the city, or is that still State Road, Jackson Avenue?
I think the state is done picking it up at this point in time, so anything that's not been picked by this point in time is going to be the city having to get it. But we'll also have to take a look and see if it's not illegal dumping, or if it's, depending on where it is on the private property, we'll have to look at all those things.
Because where she's talking about, and then you ride up about half a block, there's another big, now, she wasn't talking about that one, but one right in front of her, but they both...
Three farther down.
Huh?
Yeah, I might go there.
But it is in the road a little bit, the debris, so, but I'll call them tonight.
I have a way to positively end on this. I got a nice email from Chip and Angel Jones, and I'll send it to you, Jim, so you can send it to James, but they were very, very, said the city crew came, they were very pleased with all their service. They said, I know y'all hear a lot of complaints over the past six months, but this compliment, please compliment the crew, but let them know how much your work is appreciated. So, I'll get this to you, get to James, so he's, anyway, very nice, Chip and Angel Jones.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the utility billing transition updates. So, next slide. No changes to this slide. Again, we're down, you know, responding to phone calls within a business day and in some cases, same day, as we've put more customer assets in play for this period of time as we go through the transition. Next slide. No changes to this slide. Next slide. Again, no changes to this slide, and that, just as a reminder, we haven't shut off any services since December, and we've been charging late fees since early February. And so, ultimately, until we're 100% sure that we can pass an audit to be able to make sure that all the bills are accurate, we will not be putting any kind of penalties in place. Next slide. So, we did meet our goal of getting out the March 25 bills last week, and so, as we see some of the traffic that's picking up in our finance lobby today, those are, a number of those are people that have received the March 25 bills, and so, we'll continue to work that. Next slide. Again, as we're talking about, we're right in the middle there where the high lobby volume expected is. I would tell you, the April 10 bills are scheduled to go out now on the 30th, not the 29th, so I have a slide every day, so you'll see bills that'll start to arrive in people's inboxes starting on May 1st. And again, we anticipate those folks will hit the lobby the following week, and no other changes to the timeline as expected. The next critical item you have there is taxes will be due 1st of May, and so, I have prioritized the finance department as a supported element, and so, we have stripped a number of administrative personnel out of other departments to assist Linda through this week, to make sure that we're able to return calls and make sure we're kind of doubling down in the lobby to make sure those folks are serviced, and Linda already talked about the setup they have downstairs, and that seems to be working pretty well. And we're scheduled for a bank draft on April 10th at the end of this week. Next slide. Still working through with Clover, trying to get a meeting scheduled with them and with Fiserv. Again, we are tracking that people that pay online between those dates, the 9th of April and the 14th, were received, but that data was not transmitted to the city, so we're working, trying to get those payments released to us to have better visibility of that. But again, if people are worried about, hey, this didn't reflect on my bill, it doesn't show a credit, we're tracking that, that's something we're still running to ground with Clover. And again, no late fees and no penalties associated with any of this until we get through the full transition from the old system into the new system. Next slide. Again, bottom line is, we have stood up for this period of time, much like we did for the hurricane, we've got a dedicated customer support line, that number is listed there as 803-442-5717, and again, that's the centralized number for people to call as we're going through the software transition, and we'll leave that number manned, and I will certainly inform the council when we've gotten all the way through this process and that we de-scope this operation, so where that number will go vacant. Next slide. I'll pause for any questions from council.
Well, is Clover working tightly with the citizen, I mean, with the city, or it's just, okay, I mean, are they stepping up to the plate?
I would say no.
Well, I tell them, this is a city, and our citizens are angry, and that's not right. It's not right. Who do we need to call, President Trump or what?
Oh.
Okay, okay. I mean, that, it's just not right. Why are they not taking this serious?
Councilwoman, there's a number of technical difficulties that they've experienced, and I think they're struggling with trying to figure out how to fix those things. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for this evening from a staff perspective, and I turn it over to you.
All right. I've got just three announcements. Election tomorrow, go to the city website, lower right, everything you want to know. So, I think should not be any issue with that, so everybody should know where to go. Got that. Just let everybody know, the North Augusta National Day of Prayer will be made the first. True North is hosting that. Doors open at 8:00, program starts at 8:30. There'll be a lot of singing, will be a lot of prayers, and then the Second Annual North Augusta Prayer Walk will be from 6:00 to 8:00. We've gone from about five churches last year to 15, so going to be really excited about folks that same night, yeah, May 1st, 6:00 to 8:00. And all that information is on the calendar for May 1. And then, we don't normally do it this early, but we've got real good news, excited about Jack-o'-lan Jubilee. I can say it, right, Rick? We're good? All right, so, Friday night, as you know, is our Christian contemporary music, and Friday night is going to be an incredible artist, his name is Matthew West. So, he's had 37 number ones, either as an artist and as a songwriter, he's had been Grammy nomination five times, he's won every award you can think of. So, just incredible, Friday night's going to be an amazing opportunity for folks, so really excited about that. He's written hit songs for Rascal Flatts, Amy Grant, Casting Grounds, amazing. So, that's on Friday night, and Saturday night is a group, it's a great group, it's called Blues Traveler. Y'all heard of Blues Travelers? You heard of them? Dave, you heard of them? All right, so, they've had, sold over 6 million copies, their hit singles are Runaround and Hook, they won a Grammy Award, their Blues Travelers are fused in blues rock, folk soul, psychedelic rock, the John Popper's harmonica has become an iconic part of their music, known for marathon live shows and jam band style improvisation. They've been turned over 35 years. So, Rick, I think you, car, y'all headed out of the park again. So, when do, will we start, will we be able to put that on our Explore North Augusta in the near future? When? Okay, great. All right, that's all I got. What you got, sir? David? Jim? Ms. Pat?
Yeah, I got one thing. You know, my age, we all had voting registration cards with our precincts. Now, those are no longer used or licensed.
Yeah.
What, because when people call me, Pat, when I vote, I say, what precinct? I have no clue. I mean, what happens?
We can, go to the city of North Augusta website, click the link, and on that, Jamie has down, has put a link to SC.gov.
But you don't know the precinct.
No, but that's how you find the precinct. We tell you how to get to your precinct. So, you go to, so if you go to the city website, tell them exactly.
Okay, it's, so, in order to find your precinct number under scvotes.gov, you're going to click on the voter's downlink, and you're going to click on check your voter registration and find your municipal precinct number. That number then will represent what the precinct is on that public notice that is on our website, and then that will be your polling location. They'll put in information, they have to put in Aiken County, their name, date of birth, and last four digits of the social security number, there's a whole thing. If someone needs help, they can just call, and I will, we can help. For Aiken County.
That's a personal problem. I mean, we're showing them how to do it, if they want to vote, they can take five minutes to do it.
Thank you, Mom, we lied about them.
That's outside our range. Our job is just to get, tell them where to go. We just want people to vote. All right, anything else? How about you, Mr. McGee? You good? All right. Anything? Are we standing?